Well, why don't we go ahead and get started? So I'm gonna kick us off tonight. I think a lot of folks know me. If you don't, I'll just do a quick introduction before I jump into our first part of the night. My name is Shelby Chestnut. I'm class of 2005. I'm a very proud alumni of our dear Antioch College, and I'm currently the Chair of the Board of Trustees. So it's really great to see so many folks here and just how many of you have worked with over the years? It's amazing. Before we get started, we wanted to open it up with the college's land acknowledgement, and it's a sort of work in progress and something that the college has really been putting forward to think about how we center sort of where we've been and where we're going. So I'm just gonna read a statement and then I'm gonna move us into some housekeeping before we kick the night off. So "A land acknowledgement is an important path and first step to dismantling racial and colonized oppression within our spaces. Indigenous nations have always formally welcomed and acknowledged land territories when hosting visitors and when traveling to neighboring communities. The land is not just merely space that bodies occupy. It is depositories of culture, history, history, and tradition. And it is these traditions in mind that we reflect and center ourselves." Sorry, I need to get rid of myself because all I can see is myself right now. "Our thoughts towards respect. Please join us as we acknowledge and honor the word Ohio comes from the Iroquois word 'Ohio' for good rivers and was a place of gathering and ceremony, trade and exchange, food growing, sharing and story, and respect for culture. The Iroquois, Sui, and the Algonquin-speaking peoples are still here. We can never separate the people from the land, and for this land longs for its people. We acknowledge the homelands of the Shawnee, the Delaware, Potawatomi, Miami, Windott, Seneca, Chippewa, Ottawa, and the Wapakonada," I think is how I pronounce it. "Over thirty-nine historic nations and bands call this land home. Today, we are gathered on the land that was unceded and stolen. I ask you to acknowledge these communities, their elders, past and present, as well as future generations. We are committed to the process of working to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism. We acknowledge that this place was founded upon exclusions and erasures of indigenous knowledge about how to care for these lands. We are obligated to support and educate each other with accurate information about the true history of this land. Decolonization means that we will strive to be in service of the water and the rivers and the animals in relational solidarity with them. And as people now on this land, we must do what we can to provide nature and wilderness with protection and defense. This land acknowledgement was authored by our very own Shane Creeping Bear of the Kiowa Tribe in collaboration with Chief Ben Barnes of the Shawnee Tribe based in Miami, Oklahoma, whose people were forcibly removed from Ohio areas around Waukesha and 1831." Our contributors also include Don Knickerbocker, who's a Nishanabe, and Jerry Nary of the Dene Tribe, and support from the Greater Cincinnati Native American Coalition. So I know that was a lot to read and maybe take in, but I think it's important that Antioch is doing this work, and I think it's important that we as alumni are doing this work. So I'm gonna be your emcee for the night. I'm super excited. They've given me the mic, so lord knows what I might say, but I get to introduce all these amazing people that we have here for you tonight. Before I get started, I just wanna do some quick housekeeping before we do that. So a lot of folks have gotten used to Zoom and COVID, but some of us are still learning it, myself included. So when we're here tonight, we're all gonna stay muted unless we're a presenter or unless we have gotten into the stack to ask a question. Folks will see that at the bottom of their Zoom screen, there's a reaction button, and it's got a little smiley face. There, you can raise your hand. I know Antiochians love to get in the stack, so that would be a great place. You can raise your hand there. And then when you're done talking, you can also lower it there. In there, there's also these great emojis. So if you're really loving what people are saying, you think it's so funny, or you're just like, wow, this is a real celebration, you can do these different emojis. So I'll show you one right now. So that's a great way to interact while we're on Zoom, which is a little sad sometimes. If you can't figure any of that out, you can also just put your name in the stack if you want it to be in the stack and sort of put your question there. Just as an FYI, this meeting is being recorded because we wanna be able to share it to folks who can't attend and just have this moment documented of this great conversation that we're about to have. And then keep in mind, I know we are Antiochians and we have lots of questions usually. So if we don't get to your questions tonight, we will follow up with them. So it's great that you're here. We will get to as many as we can tonight, and then if we don't, we'll follow up with you. And then there's some questions and some information about transcription. So you can use the live transcription here, and it's right next to the reactions button if you'd like to read what's being said. That said, Zoom is not super accessible and is not totally accurate transcription. So I will, once I'm done talking, put in the chat a place that you can go for live transcription that is more word-for-word. And I think those were all my main announcements. So we have a number of speakers tonight. The one thing I would ask is if you do get a question and you get to ask it, that we share our names when we're speaking. We have a lot of new staff. We also are working with an interpreter tonight. So we need to think about just who we are. We're not gonna know everyone. So let's please use our names when we introduce ourselves and ask our questions. And that's kind of all I have. I might add more as we get through the night. But there's a lot of people here to help you, myself included, if you're running into some Zoom troubles. And I get to introduce our first guest of the evening, who is also a good friend of mine. It's, I think, actually our twentieth anniversary of knowing each other, and we were room, we lived next door to each other my freshman year of college. So I'm super excited to introduce Shane Creeping Bear, class of 2008, who is Antioch's Dean of Admissions. So Dean Creeping Bear has been ever-present member of the admissions team since Antioch began recruiting students in 2011. And, you know, I think many folks here will know, like most students that have come through college, the college since it reopened, have met Shane and always speak highly of him and just like how much care he gave to them. So it's pretty exciting that he probably knows more generations of Antiochians since reopening than a lot of us do. So in recent years, he served as the Associate Director of Admissions. He personally developed key partnerships that have been monumentally important to the college's recruitment strategies, particularly recruitment to the ever-diverse student populations. And as I mentioned before, Shane is a member of the Kiowa Tribe of Oklahoma. So I'm super excited to introduce Shane, and I'm gonna pass it over to him, who's gonna talk to you about admissions.
All right. Sorry, it took me a minute to unmute myself. Excellent. I'm so excited to be here. I have a couple minutes to talk to you about the work that I'm engaging in currently in admission. I'm on the call currently. I apologize if there's a loud echo. I'm calling from the Curl Gymnasium, the Wellness Center. Thursday evenings, I teach a self-defense class for our students in our community. So I'm here to do both the tele-town hall and teach some of our students self-defense. So yeah, I just have a couple things to say. I wanna give you all a quick snapshot of what our numbers look like now. Pull up my notes. Yeah, so we've currently have one hundred and sixteen or one hundred and eighteen admitted students for the fall 2022 incoming class. They are in the process of making their decisions about what college that they'll attend in the fall. Fourteen of those students have already accepted their offer, and they have until May 1st, which is the national deposit deadline. Antioch is rolling, so we take applicants beyond May 1st. So students do have some time to decide beyond that, but many other schools are pressuring them to make these decisions. We have seven students who have deposited for the fall, and that means they are committed to us. And that's exactly where we are on this day last year. Of those applicants, the highest, the most popular majors are psychology, followed by the sciences, which is a combination of bio-science, biology, biomedical science, environmental science. And then undecided is also one of the largest groups. So a lot of our students do take the time to come to Antioch, explore our curriculum before they make a decision about their majors. Right now, in our admitted pool, our overall unweighted GPA for our students, three point three four. And most of our applicants this year are coming from the state of Texas. After Texas is Ohio, but we do still have a national draw for our students. This is a challenging time to be recruiting. There's many pressures that go into this work that we find ourselves competing in this marketplace on. Applications across the board at all sort of schools are trailing or down this year, even more so than last year. So this is something that we're seeing in many other institutions, both large, small, private, public. There's a lot of factors that can contribute to this, but a lot of speculation and data suggests that COVID, of course, has a big impact on students applying late to college. It's not that they're not applying, it's that they are applying later and later. This, I'm excited to announce that this year, we will be having our first admitted student open house and overnight event since 2018. We had planned one in 2019, but that's when everything got shut down for COVID. So at the end of April, we'll welcome a number of our admitted students to campus to visit, meet our students, speak with our faculty, see the glen, see the lush green campus that'll be blossoming here in the spring. It's usually a high-yield event with a lot of energy, and we're so excited to be able to welcome our prospective students back to campus. It's a big deal for us. With the help of our new Director of Communication, Matt Shetler, we've devised a plan to do personalized welcome videos to each admitted student this year. So we're gonna be calling upon students, current students, our staff, our trustees, and maybe even our alumni to record messages that are unique and individualized to welcome these students to campus. I do expect our numbers to continue to grow beyond May. We are coming out of a challenging year. We have two folks in our office currently, and we're growing the office back to with more staff. But given all of the challenges, our numbers are holding up strong, and we're very enthusiastic about what they're showing us. I'm really excited to be in this role. I'm really excited to move our institution forward. As you can imagine, I'm a proud Antiochian myself, and I'm so excited to be doing this work. I think critically about my role in recruiting students to Antioch. I'm really excited about the collaborative opportunities that I have to work both across departments on campus, but to also work in developing new external partnerships as well as continuing to develop the ones that we have that are currently existing. The Texas number probably stands out to many of you. We haven't normally done that with Texas, but we have two really strong partnerships with two school networks in Texas. One is from the Idea School Network, which is in the Rio Grande Valley. They also have campuses in San Antonio and Austin, Texas. Most of our students are applying from the Rio Grande Valley. We're three years into a partnership. Every year, they've sent us more and more applicants. And as our relationship develops, they're better able to articulate who we are to their students and send us those right-fit applicants. This year, they have sent us sixty-seven applicants from the Idea Network. It's incredible. This school network serves a large number of first-generation students and students of color. One of the largest populations of students entering the pipeline today, actually. So it's also the only growing population within a shrinking number of college-bound students. I'm not sure if many of you have heard me speak on this before, but I always talk about the challenges in enrollment across the board is that there are just fewer and fewer students every year entering the college pipeline. And that starts with kindergarten all the way through the senior year. We're seeing this trend. And we, college enrollment leaders, are seeing this go into the future, into 2037, before it begins to level out a decline. So having these partnerships is paramount to our growth and our long-term health as an institution. And it will help us continue to meet our enrollment goals in years to come. Other organizations that we are partnered with are the Uplift Education in Dallas, Texas. Also predominantly serves first-generation students. One interesting thing about the Uplift Network is every student engages in a full IB curriculum in order to graduate. Another partnership we recently established with is with an organization called Seeds of Fortune. Seeds of Fortune is an organization whose mission is to build strong women leaders. They work with many schools in many different states, offering guidance and financial assistance for young women of color. It's also my hope that we're able to reach into our backyard here in Ohio and in the region, in Montgomery County, in the Dayton area, and even here in Green County. There's a perception that Antioch is not accessible, that we are unaffordable, or even exclusive. I'll be working with departments on campus to develop ways to change this perception and grow our reputation in the area. We recently signed an agreement with an organization called the Montgomery County Ohio College Promise. The mission of this organization is to identify, select, and support Montgomery County poverty-impacted students who show academic promise, so the dream of attending and graduating from college becomes a reality. This is something that exists here in Montgomery County, which is the Dayton region. I'm just really excited about the partnerships. I do feel like this is going to support us over the long term here at Antioch. I'm excited to continue my role and bring students to campus who will succeed and go on to change the lives of the communities that they work in, the communities that they're from, and the communities that we all live in and work in. With that being said, that's the end of my presentation. I think I might have went over my time slightly, so I apologize. But I'll be back on later to field some questions for you all.
That's great, Shane. And I also think it's important that maybe you went over because it often is, everyone wants to know what's going on in your world, and it seems like good news, which is always good. And kudos to anyone who is trying to recruit college students in a global pandemic. Turns out it's a challenge. But here we are. We're kicking ass. I get to introduce our new Dean of Students next to, I had lunch with him a few weeks ago. He is just a really awesome guy. So Bill Fox, who, I think Bill has been at the college a couple months now. He really, truly hit the ground running. Bill earned his BA in Political Science and Speech Communications from James Madison University, his MA in Higher Education and Student Affairs from Ohio State University, and his doctoral, Doctorate of Education in Higher Education Management from the University of Pittsburgh. I'm calling into you from Pittsburgh, so I can just see Pitt's campus right down the street. And I like this, ask him about his work, and Bill says, "My life's work thus far has exposed me to the life stories, struggles, and achievements of hundreds of young people. I feel fortunate to have benefited from their openness with me. Empathy is a personal strength, and it is expressed in my daily work. These conversations have influenced how I live my life and serve as an educator and ally. I enjoy the process of building meaningful relationships and enhancing a sense of connection to the community on campus." So I think we just, safe to say, we have an awesome Dean of Student Affairs, and I'm gonna pass it over to you, Bill. So thanks for coming.
I am now unmuted. Okay, thanks, everyone. Hi. It's wonderful to be able to introduce myself and start to get to know this community. I am on month three. So there is a bio up on the website. If you put in Bill Fox, you'll know a little bit more about who I am and where I come from and what's important to me as I approach the work. I just wanted to acknowledge Jane for her trust in me in this role, and I wanted to also acknowledge being part of a history. And you probably know the names of Deans of Students or other types in the past, and I just wanna say how thankful I am to have been invited to join the community. I come from Denison University in Ohio. I was the dean there for a decade and worked at Denison for about fifteen years. My passion is small liberal arts residential colleges, and, you know, to be able to do this work at Antioch is super special. I appreciate the shout-outs from some of the students who will keep me honest on this talk. But I care deeply about trying to improve their student experience, and that's really important to me. And as you can imagine, the first few months on a job, you do the listening tour. I don't want that tour to end. I hope the conversations that we've started and the trust that students have put in me and willingness to share, you know, what's great about their experience, but how they wanna see Antioch improve continues. And so feel like it's been a flurry of activity and getting some things done. My number-one job, I think, right now is to lift up and support the work of the Student Affairs Team. As you can imagine, these are frontline staff who work in the residence halls, who work in the health and counseling services, who work in student success, including tutoring and writing and all of those different coaching skills that we provide to students. It also includes our gender equity work and our Title IX and our student conduct work as well. So some of these roles are really challenging. You throw in a global health pandemic and social and political upheavals in the world, and you just think about the folks doing the work, the important work in being alongside students through it. And so if I can be their cheerleader and ask for resources to help them do their work, you know, that's my hope and my intention. I wanna talk a little bit about, you know, Student Affairs nationally and how I'm thinking about it in this moment at Antioch. You know, what a great place to be when we're training future leaders and people who wanna make change in the world, and we're doing that in a liberal arts context where we're teaching critical thinking skills and really good communication skills and dialogue across difference. You know, my approach is really to help students find that agency here on the campus to practice the skills of social change and to be vulnerable in that space and to ask for help, ask for volunteers, and to invite different thinking in. And if we've learned anything from the pandemic, we know we can't return to the nostalgia of the past. We are forever changed by the traumas that we've experienced through the pandemics. And, you know, for me in this moment, I think a lot about, you know, wanting to return to some of the basics, right? You know, using the residence halls as a place for support and meaningful connection, and having RAs who are hired to do this work who really genuinely care about the students on their floors and are looking out, anticipating need. Really appreciate that approach. But I also think, you know, we also can't do what we've been doing in the past. We have to innovate. You know, there was a flurry of activity. A lot of people have left our field, actually, just because of the crisis management responsibilities and other things taking a toll on them as persons and professionals. And so I care a lot right now about thinking in new ways. How might we be able to improve on our practices of the past towards this kind of new normal and what is sustainable, spending a lot of time thinking about infrastructure? Where should our resources go? I think you will know from me over the years that I have this well-being orientation, and I have this desire for us to think holistically as a college about student wellness and support and to, you know, be courageous and collaborative in that work and to rely less on these silos or things that Student Affairs has traditionally been good at in the past or expectations on faculty to do particular things but not Student Affairs, and really having the conversation about how we can all be in on one team, supporting the success and well-being of students, and what are the life lessons students can learn here? You know, how to be a good neighbor, how to take care of oneself, how to make the call for help, how to set goals, milestones, and go about achieving them. And I'm just excited, really excited to be doing the work here and to maybe be, you know, leaning into some of the traditions and the ways of being at Antioch, but also kind of challenging us to think differently so that we don't burn out one another, that we create a culture that lifts us all up and, you know, pays attention to about how different students, how different faculty and staff are experiencing the culture and what systems can we put in place so that everybody has a good experience and gets out what they need from their time here. So I'll just kind of end there and just say, happy to take questions towards the end and really thankful for the staff that I get to work with on a day-to-day basis and the students that I've gotten to meet so far.
Thanks so much, Phil. I have to say, I'm gonna forever remember you as my friend who ordered a salad with no protein when I ordered like the grilled cheese with like extra meat. I was like, wow, this guy's really healthy, and I'm eating like the grilled cheese. It's gonna give me a heart attack. But I can't wait to have lunch with you again, and thanks for sharing all that insight. Next, I get to introduce somebody who I've gotta work with really closely in the last couple of years, who is just truly the living existence of an Antiochian. Coco Gagnier, who most folks know, class of 2018. She's our outgoing community manager. She's the first community manager of the reopened college. If you have not met her, you are really missing out on life. So Coco is a Dayton native and studied philosophy at Antioch. She's interested in radical hospitality as utopian practice and helped reopen Weston Hall as a student space. She also served on commsill during her time as a student and advocated for the re-establishment of the community manager position. Yay, Coco. In 2020, she was hired as the community manager, a position she holds currently. And sadly, her last day is the end of this month, so we will miss you, Coco, but we're so glad to have you here tonight, and I'll pass it over to you.
Thank you, Shelby, and thank you all. It's lovely to be here with you. I have, I guess, a short oration to share on community practice, some thoughts around community at Antioch. And in the fashion of a philosophy student, I pose a lot more questions than answers. I'm also gonna commit this speech faux pas, just reading straight from the page. "In a recent reflection exercise, student, staff, and faculty were asked, what is something you would never change about Antioch? Community was cited overwhelmingly. Again, in our strategic planning survey, when asked what aspect of Antioch they were most proud of, community was cited overwhelmingly. While I'm delighted at this response, especially as someone from a generation of Antiochian students who seemed constantly exasperated that Antioch lacked community, I wonder what it is, I wonder what is meant. In some ways, I am as perplexed by its stated presence as its absence. When Antiochans say 'community,' can we assume that they mean community governance? And if we cannot, what can we infer that they mean? If they are in fact separate, how can we tie them together, or should we even want to? Experiencing two orientations and two incoming classes as community manager, I have tried to explain community governance and my understanding of its value. Regardless of my enthusiasm or articulation of possibility, I'm" Regardless of my enthusiasm or articulation of possibility, I'm often met with blank stares. The message seemingly gets lost in the leap into college life. I've experienced students directly projecting their distrust of the American government onto Antioch community government. Classroom co-op community, which I believe is one of the most important and concise ways we express our experiential educational program implies community governance. However, what I keep running up against is that community governance seems to rely on a yet to be articulated principle of community. Without the CG and its purpose, to those not in the know feels ungrounded. It is important to be wary of community as a vacuous or presumptive signifier. And Miranda Joseph's book Against the Romance of Community, she emphasizes that because the term carries such positive connotations, community is deployed by any and everyone pressing any sort of cause. How do students, staff and faculty decide that community governance is something important to them? How do we understand our participation beyond notions of good democratic citizenship in a national context that have mostly been an experience of alienation and disenfranchisement? And teaching community, Bell Hooks writes, "All too often we think of community in terms of being with folks like ourselves, the same class, same race, same ethnicity, same social standing and the like. I think we need to be wary. We need to work against the danger of evoking something that we don't challenge ourselves to actually practice." Returning to our mission and vision, which I often do to remind myself of what I'm doing here. I always come back to the idea that we're supposed to be pursuing new and better ways of living. And put together with our commitment to social justice, I can only infer that those new and better ways mean pursuing a living that resists hegemonic domination. Black radical and black feminist movements have long demonstrated the importance of this. Hooks writes, "To build community requires vigilant awareness of the work we must continually do to undermine all the socialization that leads us to behave in ways that perpetuate domination." So is this the implicit understanding of the community we are trying to cultivate at Antioch? That we want new and better ways of living, that we desperately want to get free and to get free together? Do we say that? Do we do that? Do we do and say that loudly enough? Yesterday, in a strategic planning meeting, President Jane referenced the Highlander Center. And I was inspired to return to Miles Horton and Paulo Freire's revolutionary dialogue, "We Make the Road by Walking." Freire says, "The more people participate in the process of their own education, the more the people participate in the process of defining what kind of production to produce and for what and why, the more the people participate in the development of theirselves. The more people become themselves, the better the democracy. The less people are asked about what they want, about their expectations, the less democracy we have." Community governance poses the questions, who do we want to be to one another? How do we want to organize our resources and towards what? Though at times modest in its exercises, CG is a political project in world making. Classroom co-op and community is a political process in developing ourselves. In that process, we will inevitably reproduce dominant ways of being. Again, from Miranda Joseph, "To invoke community is immediately to raise questions of belonging and power." But can we catch ourselves in the process? Does the synthesis of classroom co-op and community as intended give us the self-reflective capacity to notice all the ways we build wrong and give us some sense of what it might mean to build better? Thank you.
Wow, Coco. That was awesome. Truly. I, I'm, I'm kind of a hater of philosophy professors, but I really hope you become one. And fun fact, I co-opted the Highlander Center. So that's awesome. Next, I get to, I, I, I'm introducing someone that literally needs no introduction to us, Catherine Jordan, who I had the great pleasure of meeting in 2008 in Minnesota, when we were fired up and ready to buy back the college. And she has since, I think, just continued to prove herself as one of the best fundraisers we all know and love. So I'll read her bio and truly she needs no introduction. So Catherine Jordan, class of seventy-two, who's also the vice president of the Antioch College Alumni Board. Deep in refinement, Catherine Jordan puts her skills of herding cats to good use. Building neighborhood social capital by organizing May Day and Halloween processions. If you've never been to the May Day in Minneapolis, you must check it out. It's one of the best. Hosting creative aging in place groups and inviting children on the block to an annual spring egg hunt. She is serving her sixth unconsecutive term on the Antioch College Board. She channels the magic hat to raise funds. She's co-hosting Professor Robert Fogarty's Celebration of Life in New York City, and she was also spearheading planning for the college's in-person, we're doing it in person this year reunion. So without further ado, I'll pass it to my friend Catherine Jordan.
Thank you, Shelby. Thank you so much. Yes, I'm, I'm reaching out to you from Minneapolis. Winter is quickly leaving us. So I'm here to talk about reunion. The 2022 Antioch College reunion entitled March On Antioch will be in person in Yellow Springs this July, the fourteenth to the seventeenth. We are so excited to welcome back to campus all classes, especially the class of nineteen seventy-two, which is our fiftieth class, as well as the classes of seventy and seventy-one, who missed their fiftieth in-person reunion due to the pandemic. Other anniversary years like the fifth or the twenty-fifth or the sixty-fifth are encouraged to organize your cohort to return this year. We are planning a variety of presentations, scintillating conversations and interactive events to entice alums from every discipline back to campus. So some highlights include Thursday's fiftieth anniversary dinner, where we also are going to honor our beloved faculty with some special tributes. We have dance alums like Diane Breakstone Coelho and Rebecca Nordstrom and Seal Grusen and Brooke Higdon and many more who will engage us all in fun community flash dances and pop-ups throughout the weekend. They will also offer training in iconic dances like Trio A and lead us in a ritual to honor dancers we have lost like Michael Fagin's. Nancy Pollak and Denny Eagleson are organizing a virtual photography and video exhibition of past performances. There'll be panels on current issues, thanks to Larry Rubin, John Baker and David Scott, like how to address right wing attacks on public education, a threat to Horace Mann's legacy, and how to develop livable communities using Yellow Springs as an object lesson. Scott Saunders, head of Antiochiana, will give us a historical tour, tour of campus and the farm. And Peter Townsend, emeritus geology faculty, will give us a photographic tour of the glen as well as an actual walk. We'll be hearing from the winning victories finalists and vote on their proposals. These are proposals by young alums to receive a cash grant to, which is sponsored by alumni member Matthew Morgan. These are ideas that they will then, with those funds, actually launch. The decades receptions will encourage networking and reconnecting. Some, some of the events will be hybrid, so you can watch them from home, like the Alumni Board Annual Meeting. You don't want to miss it, where we will brief you on our priorities. President Jane Fernandez will give us the state of the college address. And the alumni awardees will, will make their presentations of their life work. So that's the Horace Mann Award, that's the Morgan Award and others. We are working on the possibility of hosting a cabaret Horus, so alums can share short pieces of music, dance, poetry and spoken word. If you're interested in that, call me, help me organize it. WISO Radio will be interviewing a select number of alums to share your stories on what impact Antioch has had in your life. There will be opportunities for all of us to recognize the college closer, closure in 2008 and its impact on students from that era. A time of remembrance will acknowledge alumni we have lost this year and in the past. And then the, the best of all, the div dance will be DJed by Clean Gene Lowman, my guy, and Shane Creeping Bear. They are good friends and they're going to work together to, to dance up a storm. And of course, the best part of reunion is the opportunity to reconnect with your friends. I encourage you to reach out to your classmates and get them to register. Be there or be square is my motto. Registration materials and housing information will be available April first. Due to COVID protocols, we're limiting registration to two hundred and fifty spots at this time, so don't hesitate. We will have some dorm rooms available and we're putting area hotel rooms on hold. We can't wait to welcome you back to campus in Yellow Springs. We need your involvement at Antioch and there's no better way to engage than attending reunion and the volunteer work project that happens the week before. I've been going for the last number of years and it is a wonderful opportunity to meet alums across the generations. I want to give special thanks to the advancement team members who are doing double duty this year to organize reunion. Vanessa Covano, Mary Evans and the Matts, Matt Walker and Matt Shutter, Shutter. We appreciate all you do. Thanks so much.
Wow, I can't wait for reunion. This is going to be a blast and it's in person. Awesome. Um, I also, I next get to introduce my new friend alumni who I hadn't met until recently are our new Vice President of Finance and Administration, Bob McKee, class of eighty-eight. I was just in Yellow Springs a couple of weeks ago and Bob and I were walking around and he has a lot of plans that are coming to life with the college and we looked at all the buildings and it was just a lot of fun. So I'm going to read Bob's bio and then pass it over to him. So Bob is an alumnus of Antioch College where he studied management and business. Upon graduation, he spent several years in the fire and emergency medical services, emergency management, disaster preparedness and crisis planning. Bob has worked at the local, state and federal and international government levels in emergency response and crisis management, very transferable skill to Antioch. Bob returned enthusiastically to the college in October of 2021 as our Vice President of Finance and Administration. And if you haven't had the pleasure of meeting Bob, he's literally one of the nicest guys you will ever meet and I can't wait to pass the mic to you because I'm sure you have good news, Bob.
Thank you, Shelby. Hello, everyone, fellow Antiochians. As Shelby mentioned, I am a class of nineteen eighty-eight. And I have had an eclectic background of service. And most recently, several years in higher education in roles within finance and administration. So as Shane said, they came to Texas to recruit me. I was at Texas A&amp;M University and then the University of Houston. So there's, there's part of our Texas connection on admissions. But thankfully, Tony Dosick and April Wolford, whom I have stayed in touch with, were served as my recruiting search firm. And it was the, one of the easiest decisions to return home to Antioch from the moment that I met Jane Fernandez. I have worked for presidents, chancellors, deans of all kinds, and Jane is one of the most amazing human beings that I've ever met. And although I've just returned to the college in October, I have learned so much from Jane and I am absolutely proud to be back. What, what do I bring to the college? Again, in my most recent role, I was the Chief Financial Officer for the College of Liberal Arts and Social Sciences in Houston. While very much larger than Antioch, many of the themes were very true and very transferable. So one of the things that I have tried to make as a paramount is to increase the financial foundation, the communication and transparency. As we all know, we have had peaks and valleys is the best way to describe it through the years. Antioch has always seemingly had issues with finances, issues with challenges. And I think bringing a higher education model, a model of business, has been something that is of value. And we're already seeing quite a difference. We are securing our future and we are growing our investments. How are we doing that? Again, basic premise. From the end of February compared to the same period in last year in 2021, we have reduced our expenses by three million six hundred and twelve thousand dollars. One would say, okay, what about the revenue side? Our revenue is actually as of the end of February, three hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars ahead of where we had projected. What we're doing is we're working collectively, we're collaborating. And moreover, finance and advancement are working so very closely. The college has always had a cash mentality that we must do things by cash in and cash out. So in many cases, the valuable donors, many of you, have provided gifts with specific intent. And they may or may not have been used as intended, not in an ill form, but a gift has been made for a certain purpose, yet the college has used cash to make that gift happen. So it has been something as simple, but as complex as that. What we continue to do is to look at our entire asset structure, our amazing campus, our amazing buildings that are certainly tired and need help, but we're helping them. Encouraging our staff, our faculty and our students, encouraging, encouraging retention and recruiting of the very best staff and faculty. All of these things are related to the financial journey of the college. What I'd like to really wrap up in saying is that those individuals that are providing the health and the welfare of the college through kindness and giving, I hope I can look you in the eyes through this virtual environment and give you a sense of faith, a sense of trust that we are doing everything possible to continue to grow and foundation this health of the college. I look forward to working with each of you. I've met many of you. And as always, whether through this venue or anytime, please feel free to reach out to me. I will provide you whatever information I can on the spot. Thank you for all you do and thank you for joining us tonight. Thank you, Shelby.
Thank you so much, Bob. That's great. And as somebody who sat on the finance committee of the board, it is a real C, welcome C change to have you leading us and giving us these good, this good information. So I get to introduce the person who's helped put this all together tonight. Next, they were a classmate of mine. We had a lot of fun. Turns out they still wear the same leather jacket they wore when we were at Antioch. It's very cool. Their hair was a lot more purple, I think, at the time. But I'm going to hand it over to my colleague, Matt Walker, who's a graduate of the college, class of two thousand and four and is our current annual fund manager. So take it away, Matt. And after Matt will be our very own Jane Fernandez.
Thank you, Shelby. Can everybody hear me okay? See some heads bobbing? That's good. Thanks, everyone, for joining us. It really means a lot. Your presence here is greatly appreciated. So good evening and thank you. As you can tell from these wonderful presentations, the college is in pretty good shape right now. But it's also a crucial time to show your support. Not only are we surviving, we're growing and thriving, and that's exactly what we plan to keep doing. A group of generous donors have pledged to match gifts this month to the college, up to five hundred thousand dollars. And we are well on our way to reaching this goal. But we need help from all of you. For the price of a cup of coffee or a night out on the town, as Duffy always says, you can support this institution that continues to be a force for positive change. I think the world needs Antioch now more than ever. So let's all be part of the celebration of reaching our million dollar Volvos Month. We're going to be posting ways to donate in the chat. You can do it online, over the phone or by mail. We also have a quick reference code that you'll see on some of our virtual backgrounds here or QR code available for easy access. All you have to do is point your smartphone camera at the QR code and it'll open a link to our PayPal donation page. Got that? All you have to do is point your smartphone camera at the QR code and it'll open a link to our PayPal donation page. Got that? Just wanted to thank Vanessa Cubano for her perseverance and making the QR code and bringing it to the group. Again, I'm gonna drop the information on ways to give into the chat. Thank you all for your generous contribution and for attending this town hall meeting. Back to you Shelby.
Thank you so much, Matt. Next, I get to introduce someone who I hope you all have met. And if you have not, you will soon get to know her. Jane Fernandez, who's our current president at the college. Jane became the second female president and our first deaf president in Antioch College's 170-year history in August of this past year. I have no idea what year it is because of COVID. And before coming to Antioch, Jane was the president at Guilford College in Greensboro, North Carolina. I'm gonna read to you a quote that Jane sort of says here about Antioch. "I was strongly drawn to Antioch because it was always, it always combined my two great academic passions, liberal arts and social justice." Dr. Fernandez says, Dr. Fernandez, "She is an active voice and participant in addressing critical social justice issues, receiving national attention for Guilford College's Stand Against North Carolina's HB2 law. She has led campuses in undertaking difficult conversations, examining meaningful ways to address systematic racism, gender inequality and sexual assault, three of the most pressing social justice issues facing the, facing colleges nationwide and certainly Antioch College right now." So Jane, I'm gonna pass it over to you and I'm super excited to hear what you have to say to us.
Okay, um, welcome everyone and I thank, thank everyone of our colleagues, family and friends who are here tonight. And I'm very proud to have led Antioch over the past seven months. This is a really important college and I believe we must hold fast to our goal of becoming a sustainable college with a mission to provide rigorous liberal arts education combined with social justice efforts. When I visit alumni, they invariably start off by explaining to me all the memories they have of their time at Antioch. And they're always very humble, almost nonchalant, while they're telling me about the most amazing experiences I've ever heard of. So I have a couple of examples. One is Judy Brett told me that on her co-op, she arrived at a family's home to find out that it harbored domestic violence among two parents with three children living in the house. And she was standing there asking herself, what is she supposed to do now? And Lester Schuman went to Paris and met James Baldwin in a speakeasy, spent several hours talking to him. Wow, you know, and Lawrence Pearl with two other students from Antioch went on a co-op together, one black and two white. And they had to find a place to live to do their co-op. But they were flatly denied housing wherever they sought. And they realized over time that that was due to having a black man in their group. So anyway, after trying multiple times and getting nowhere, two of them ended up at the Y and Lawrence was in another place. But they kept trying until eventually they found a landlord willing to rent them. So I envision that in 10 years, I will be looking back on significant experiences Antioch is facing now. And I will want to share them with others, conveying what we learned about ourselves and to put it in in the name, the words of a title of one of Bell Hooks Books, Where We Stand. You know, where we stand in the world when faced with and challenged by inequity and the need for justice, just as Judy Lester and Lawrence did. I believe Antioch today is standing at a crossroads, figuring out where it stands and now is a turning point. Through our actions today, Antioch will emerge as sustainable and influential in higher education, destined to be a powerful force in the pursuit of ever more progressive thinking and democracy. We're moving in a positive direction today and we have every reason to work hard with optimism. So I want to say a few words about the general climate and mood on campus. The college is healing after a sustained period of difficulty and change. Going through COVID-19, intense financial pressures, painful staff and faculty layoffs, curriculum revision and the presidential, presidential transition. Bob, the major priority for the leadership team has been to attend to the campus culture and to caring for our faculty, students and staff and responding to them. Our efforts are ongoing, but we've made visible progress. So some specific areas. Reopening the Wellness Center has had a very positive impact on morale and overall mental, mental wellness. We have a Wellness Center membership as an employee benefit. And we're incentivizing employees to attend yoga and fitness classes. It's had a positive impact on the college revenue and is revenue generating after just a few months. When student concerns came up at one of the community meetings, I learned about community governance. You can never tell what's going to happen. So when concerns came up at a meeting, we have sessions devoted to those concerns and then we responded to all of the concerns. My team had a plan to respond to all of the concern. And later, when we met with the students, we found that they didn't have any more concerns in those areas where we had worked. So we were developing a sense of collegiality and trust with students. In another important step forward for community governance, staff have organized a staff assembly to nurture staff power and agents. Coco Gagne deserves our thanks as community manager for venturing into the facilitation of the staff in for, starting to form the staff group. With Bob McKee's leadership in finance and administration, we're rebuilding trust between the finance office and faculty, staff and students by offering more transparency with finances and working against the scarcity mentality that has been prevalent. Because I know it's hard to believe, but Antioch is actually abundantly blessed. And we can work at Antioch in a spirit of abundance because that is positive and will help to get us to the Antioch that we know we ought to have. We're beginning to ease COVID restrictions, especially around masking and gatherings. And we're returning to more on-campus work and which is really key to everything thriving as a residential campus. So we look forward to having more people back on campus and seeing the community more visibly and present. And then Bill Fox has already launched a series of programs such as BEEP Vibe Check at Data and Donuts with the D-A-M-E to keep a better pulse on student successes and concerns and respond quickly as we learn about what students have achieved or concerns they have, we can respond quickly. Okay, so strategic planning is a big part of what we're doing. I think we've been focusing on that almost every day since I got here. In December, we announced a strategic planning process that would build upon our work. It builds upon what we're already doing and enable us to emphasize strengths, but also take action to address some of the areas we know we need to improve. So this strategic plan is led by a subcommittee consisting of board members along with faculty, staff and student representatives. They've been working really hard almost every day in different forms. We already made a lot of progress. So since January, we collected information from a survey and five focus groups, including one amazing focus group with the alumni board and another great meeting with the Yellow Springs Village community. We drafted five goals and it's just changed to six goals and associated objectives. And they are addressing issues, important issues head on such as strategic communication, multi-year fundraising, faculty hiring, financial modeling, recruitment and retention, student services and equity and justice for all camps. We're looking forward to board approval of the plan, the strategic plan in May 2022. And we report on the plan to the Higher Learning Commission in June 2022. I want to thank Hannah Montgomery for her extraordinary expertise in strategic planning. She is one of the heroines at this time at Antioch because we would not be as close as we are to getting the strategic plan done without her. I also can tell you a little bit about my presidential first year goals. I've been making progress on those goals to advance Antioch College, clarify and strengthen academic offerings, strengthen college infrastructure, manage the budget, organize the administration, develop board, board development, submit the report to the Higher Learning Commission in June and prioritize social justice and equity. We've already talked about the progress in a lot of these areas. But I also want to mention we've made progress, made improvements to the infrastructure based on what we heard from students. For example, we have more lighting at night on campus. That's great for me. Really great to have more lighting at night. We created a group kitchens advisory committee to address kitchen and dining offerings. And we created 24/7 study space. With the leadership of Charlie Alvarez, the college made progress on DEI programming and elevating the Coret Scott King Center. So the center is now hosting a widely successful Getting to the Root Workshop. And I understand that all the presidents of endeavor schools are going to come and take the Getting to the Root, next Getting to the Root Workshop here at Antioch. That's amazing. We've had people from the Village Council Home Inc. and Board of Trustees and other nonprofits, as well as our students, faculty and staff. The college is going to host the Great Lex College Association Barcock Student Leadership Conference in the fall and the Soshi DEI Leaders Conference in the spring of 2023. So I'm glad to see Skorata Scott King Foundation taking a greater role. And I know that this is just the beginning. There's an even greater role to come for the Coret Scott King Center. We're having a launch, sixth annual legacy launch of the Coret Scott King Center coming up on April 29th. So if you are local in Yellow Springs or Ohio, or you'll be around, we welcome you to come and join us for that launch. A couple of other things may be worth mentioning that are sort of things just popping up around and not yet, possibly not yet fully organized. And it's always a risk to say something like this. I probably should know better than to discuss them. But I'm excited about them. So I'm gonna say, I'm working on partnerships in Yellow Springs and beyond with businesses and nonprofits. And we want to share our space on campus with them and share priorities together that guide the work of us all. We still have a lot of work to do, but I hope you see that we've hit the ground running. We have a new sense of energy and positive direction. We have a sense that Antioch is moving. And I hope that you will join us by engaging and supporting in our work. Antioch needs your support. I need you. In closing this presentation, I'm grateful to Matt Walker, Mary Evans, Matt Shutter, Anita Brown, Vanessa Cubano and many others for their work in putting this program together. I'm very happy to see all of you here this evening in support of Antioch and I hope you all take good care.
Thanks so much, Jane. Let's just give Jane a Zoom muted round of applause. What a woman. I mean, I have to say, I was, I've been on the board for the last five years, six years, and it's a marked difference with Jane's leadership. And I think, you know, we're coming out of COVID and I just am so thankful for her leadership, the team she's assembled and what they've got going. And I, you know, I hope that folks lead with their good critical questions. And also, let's just take a moment as Antiochians. We are literally the college that will not give up. And I think we found the leader that will not give up with us as well. So kudos to you, Jane, and the whole college staff for just doing incredible work in the last, it's not even been a year that you've been there. So we're gonna move into the Q and A and I apologize we're late, but this is just so rich that I thought it was okay to keep it going. Reminder, we're gonna raise our virtual hands. So if you look down the bottom right area, there's the reaction button. You kind of hover over that. There's the raise hand option. Folks can raise their hand. Folks that are asking questions in the chat, we're doing responses as we can and also just making note of the questions. We probably won't get to all of those. But who's gonna be the first brave soul to raise their hand and ask us a question? I have Dan Saltman, I think. I don't, I can't totally read everyone's name. What do you have, Dan?
I can't unmute. Oh, are you hearing me now? Okay, good. So thank you. Thank you, Jane. I really appreciate your, your candor and I really appreciated that you sent out this, this announcement with a, with a notice about what was in the Antioch record. And I got to read this article about the doctor who was there from, I guess, 1917 to, I think, 2017 to 2019. And I was surprised that it was so long and it was long even after there were complaints registered. I'm an internal medicine physician, so I, I feel, you know, it sort of affected me personally too. You don't wanna see people like that behaving badly. And I could, you know, that it went on for so long, even after there were a lot of complaints about it. I had to wonder two, two things. One, if somebody was benefiting from, and I can appreciate that in a time of scarcity and sort of contracting, you need to have on-campus health services. You know, but even, even given, even in that context, you know, was somebody, why was he enabled to stay on for so long after the complaint started? And, you know, I don't know, I don't know all the players, but was somebody benefiting somehow from his continued, continued employment? So those are my questions. And I know that's, I, I, I'm not sure that's why a lot of people showed up for this meeting, but that's why I'm at this meeting, I guess. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. I'm gonna pass it to Jane to respond to that. And for folks can notice in the chat, there's been a couple of different things posted just to be transparent. So Jane, I'll pass it to you.
Okay. Well, I agree with everything that you said. All of those questions and thoughts that you have raised here have been raised in my mind and in the minds of others on campus who are deeply disturbed, very regretful that this whole circumstance happened. I'm not aware. I don't know if anyone benefited, but I do know that a lot of people were harmed. And to me, that's the, the biggest area of focus is that people at Antioch were harmed by this. I don't know of anyone who actually benefited. It's a very regretful situation, but at this time, it's in the hands of the Green County Sheriff's Department and the Ohio Medical Board. And also there's a criminal investigation. Antioch College has cooperated in every way. We provided masses of information that we had. And then we were asked for more, dug harder. And then Bob McKee and others were digging harder and provided more. So we've done everything we can to make it clear what occurred here. And at this time, I think we have to let the process play out. I don't, I don't, that helps.
Yeah, that's great, Jane. I mean, I, I will just say this and then we can move on to next questions. Jane said something to me when we learned about this unfortunate information, which was she wasn't here for this, but it's her responsibility to address it now. And she's really taken steps very seriously. And she said, you know, taking on the presidency at Antioch College means I take on everything that is Antioch. And I think the way she continues to handle this matter and support the community as well as cooperate with law enforcement and just share information with the broader community has been really an example of that leadership that she is taking on all of these really unfortunate. an example of that leadership that she is taking on all of these really unfortunate circumstances that she wasn't at the table for. So I appreciate the question. I see my good friend Gordy Feldman has a question, and then I have Robert Goldsmith in the stack after that. Gordy, what do you got?
My question is this. I graduated in nineteen fifty-seven. In my entering class in fifty-two, there were four of us from Omaha, Nebraska. The largest number of students, I think, were from New York, Metropolitan New York and Philadelphia. My question is, what efforts are underway to recultivate other parts of the country? Since so many of the students seem to be coming from Texas and Ohio rather than other parts of the Midwest, the Far West, New York, and so on.
That's a great question. And is Shane still on? Because I know he had to go teach a class. I'm looking at hundreds of people, so it's a little confusing. I don't know if there's somebody on who wants to answer that, because I think our dean, Creeping Bear, has stepped off. Jane, do you have a brief comment on that? I know you need to leave shortly.
I can, I can say that at this time, the admissions office has only one count, has Dean Creeping Bear and one admissions counselor. So our admissions counselor, Truth Garrett, is actually developing the relationships that we're working on in Texas and within the whole state of Ohio and some in Colorado and other areas. We're looking to get another admissions counselor and to work with some of the programs that will refer juniors, ideally be sophomores and juniors in high schools that resonate with our message. And then we will work and develop relationships with those. But to do that, we need sufficient people and we need time. But yes, we're reaching out to places throughout the country. Actually, our message goes out to pretty much all the states in the country. And we respond to the students who respond to us. And we can be more assertive and aggressive as we build a stronger admissions department. I'm confident that we will be doing that.
Truth, I know you're here. If you want to add anything before we move on to the next question, thanks for that, Jane. You're muted.
It's Shane in the back office.
Peace, peace. Thank you. Thank you. Before I say that directly, I just wanted to thank Shane. I want to thank all the new people, the president, Bob, Bill, because they did step into a position and they've been putting in a lot of work in a hard, in a hard seat. That's real talk, you know. And I am happy to say that I am traveling everywhere. I've just came back from doing a tour in Boston, New York, DC, and Atlanta, Georgia. I'm going to Texas for three weeks. And I have a plan to go back there again to Houston. I will go anywhere. If you, if you have a high school in, in your city, please invite me. Also, I invite you to go into the high school and, you know, and look for Antiochians. You know what I'm saying? We are working, we're working on a plan, and we are going to be in every city. I guess that's what I can say. So I'm coming everywhere until someone else comes to help, every city. Peace.
For that, Truth. Thanks for that good question, Gordy. I have Robert, then I have Callie, and then Truth, I don't know if you want to be in the stack.
Yeah, thank you. To Robert Goldsmith, graduated in nineteen seventy-six. It's sort of a question for Jane, as well as Shane and Truth could participate, of course. And that is, what does admissions need in order to attract more students? That's in a nutshell, most, most schools of this size usually have enrollments of a thousand to fifteen hundred students. And Antioch is at a hundred thirty-five. So that's my question. Thank you.
Hi, yeah, happy to take the question. I have a lot of ideas about what admission needs. People on the ground is, is a huge, will be a huge step for us as we continue to grow the office. As Jane mentioned, we are, we are looking for some new admission counselors, someone to help build out our international recruitment program as well as our transfer program. But the, yeah, I mean, the work that we're doing is, is important currently. It's really hard to sort of pinpoint the needs just because of the challenges that are in the marketplace. And schools that are like our size, who have enrollments and a seemingly infinite amount of budget to throw at their marketing and at the recruitment teams are still struggling to meet their enrollment goals regardless of their, their size. The, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot, Robert. And I know that you and I have talked a good bit. But I do believe that the work that we are currently engaging in is building it out, as well as the work that we've done in the past five years, has really built the framework for sort of the future successes that admissions is going to find. So I don't have a golden goose answer for you, just a lot of hard work on the ground, work, sending folks to schools, recruiting and building out our own programs so that our, 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 our campus here is competitive on a competitive marketplace.
Thanks for that, Jane. And I know Jane's going to have to exit soon. So questions that come up for her will direct towards her to follow up with folks individually. Next, I get to pass it to my dear friend, Callie, who many folks know as an alumni and also the amazing wife of the late Bob Devine. So Callie, what do you have that's been spicy for us tonight?
Nothing spicy, but I wanted to extend an invitation to Shane and Truth because I work at nearby Clark State College, Springfield, Ohio, fifteen minutes from here. And I know the community college connection is somewhat challenging because a lot of our students are, they don't imagine themselves going to a four-year college. But I oversee a program that works primarily with first-generation students. And I, I'd just like to extend the invitation to work with me and work with the college and area colleges to see, you know, who could, I, I know we've had one or two students go to Antioch. And I think, I think it could be a really good fit. So I just, I'm kind of throwing that out there as an invitation and maybe an opportunity to discuss ways to recruit. There are some students there who would do so well at Antioch. In fact, I have one I'd like to send there tomorrow. So that's really, that's really it. That's my invitation. So. And I, and I've loved this. I'd really like to meet Coco.
Truly. You and Coco would be fast friends, Callie. Next up, I have Chad. He's going to ask a question. Can folks unmute Chad?
Good evening. I graduated Antioch nineteen seventy-three. We didn't have a graduation ceremony because that was the year of the strike. But prior to seventy-three, the early seventies, they were halcyon days for Antioch. I benefited enormously from all sorts of interesting things. Two years in East Africa, compliments of the college. I lived in the Glen with my girlfriend for six months. That was a challenge. I ended up at the University of California, Santa Barbara because George Geiger, my mentor and professor of philosophy, arranged for me to have the Ralph W. Church Fellowship in the Philosophy Department there, without my knowing about it, by the way. And I just wonder whether we've been able to encourage the faculty to think about ways in which they might be able to facilitate further education in graduate school, for example, across the board. Certainly in philosophy, when George was there, he was adamant that I would go to graduate school and didn't, didn't plan to do it, didn't plan to be there for very long. But four years later, I benefited enormously from it. But I'm wondering if we're using the connections that our faculty has to facilitate further education on the part of our students.
Thanks for that question, Chad. I think Jane may be able to speak to that briefly before she heads out because I don't know who is the faculty rep on here. And I'm going to pass it to you, Jane.
Okay. So can I clarify? The question is, what, what kind of connection will we make to continuing education after Antioch?
Well, specifically whether we're able to use the connections that our faculty has. Most of them probably haven't gone to further study in graduate school. And those connections can be extraordinarily valuable. And before you even answer, I just wanted to say, truly, you're such a smart lady, and it's a real pleasure. My grandparents were deaf, and I learned sign language from working, working with them.
Okay, thank you. Many of the students now already do go to graduate school. And definitely, and I'm aware that the connections the faculty have helps with choosing schools to apply to or getting in or being referenced. So we would like to see students who want to continue to graduate school go there. And we committed to doing that. We work very hard for that. Is that answered?
Yes. Yes, I just want to encourage faculty members.
If you read the chat, that's one of our great success stories, Kim Landsberg. And just put that in the chat, one of our great success. But that's not the only one. Number of students are going on to major reputable graduate schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for that great question. Do I have any other questions I just want to ask? What are folks that presented here? No financial questions, no alumni reunion questions? Student Affairs, Bill has got all the answers. I see a question about the union from my dear friend, Tom Callahan. Bob, maybe you could give us a little update on where we're at with the union and next steps with that?
Absolutely, Shelby. We partner, the college partnered with the Village of Yellow Springs and Green County to apply for an Ohio Development Grant. And we were verbally notified that we received a hundred thousand dollars to assist us in bringing down the union. The union, in addition to asbestos, is deeply affected by black mold. If you walk by the, the student union, you'll actually get a smell of the black mold. It's beyond a point of repair. So we are working, we will receive the funds sometime by June of this year. And we will be building a project team led by Jane. And we will be working a demolition plan sometime for the fall is our goal. So again, what we do after that is yet to be defined. But most importantly, we will be saving the stoop. Many of us have fond memories of the stoop, but we are so looking forward to the opportunity.
Thanks for that, Bob. Neela, did you have a question? Or did you take your hand down? Can somebody unmute her?
Who was asking the question?
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you now, Neela.
Okay. I wrote something in the chat. I'm assuming or hoping that the whole recruitment process is being thought about creatively, and it's not just going through educational channels. But there are so many organizations that share the values of Antioch, many of whom involve parents with almost college-age kids and so on. Are we making an effort with those organizations, like the Unitarian Universalist Association comes to mind because that's one that I have a connection with. But there are many, many different kinds of organizations with very similar values to Antioch. I want to know what's, what's being done about that.
Shane, you want to go?
You're muted, Jane. All right, okay. All right. No, that's a great question. So the year before COVID, we did attend the Unitarian Universalist General Assembly in Spokane, Washington. We had a booth. We made some great connections there. In the last two years, I've done three presentations with different UU organizations in Florida, New York, and Philadelphia. So yeah, those are great opportunities and roads to explore. Next month in April, Truth and I will be sitting on a panel for a Quaker organization in Philadelphia to talk about social justice opportunities at college, general college. But of course, it'll be through the lens of Antioch. So these are great organizations to work through, and we've been working to build our, our, our relationships with these organizations. So yeah, no, that's a great question. And really, we're super excited to be, we've been thinking creatively about recruitment at Antioch for the last eleven years. And so we have some great opportunities, and we've been able to forge some great relationships through this creative work.
Thanks for that, Shane. I have Patty, and then I have Dan, and then anyone else that wants to be added, let me know.
I tried earlier. I couldn't. I grew up here in Yellow Springs. My dad taught theater at Antioch. And I wondered if you have a dynamic video that interviews people who came to Antioch, you know, through the years and just some of the dynamic things that have happened here. I just wondered if you use that kind of, also, like, there are people who have regular podcasts or regular, you know, things on, online. There are so many avenues now that, that might be available. So just wondered if you're touching all those bases.
Yeah, I think that's a great question. And I will say, part of the strategic planning process that we're finalizing, sorry, I'm lifting up my standing desk because I have been sitting at Zoom since about eight AM Eastern Standard Time. Part of the strategic planning process will be developing a strategic communications plan. So I imagine there'll be some materials in there and some ways to think about getting the word out of the college a little bit better than we have been. So I appreciate that, Patty. And I don't think I've seen you in like twenty years, but it's nice to see you. I have Dan, and then I have Joan Stockton. And then I think I'm going to close it out, if that's okay. Unless, Truth, do you have a question, or you just got your hand up? Go for it, Dan.
Okay, I was just going to repeat a question that somebody else asked that didn't get, that didn't get, that I thought might go well here. It was the, it was Barnes asked, what is the long-term plan for investing into services on campus for the students, medical, mental health, student success? So the, the long-term investment plan, I think, is of interest. Thank you.
That's a great question. Bill, you want to take that?
Sure, I was.
Sure, I was enjoying seeing that, that question pop up, so thank you. And I think I might just first say, I would be happy to talk to anyone on that topic offline. Or even host a think tank of people who care really deeply about where student wellness ought to be going. I think we could organize that pretty quickly. So I think before we act on any of that, we really need to get a sense of what the students want and need and hope for with that. So we're doing some listening with, with our students. I want to avoid single points of failure for our students. I also want to acknowledge the, the really comprehensive needs that our students today and in the future are going to have. So we do need a strategy. Bob has been, and Mindy in HR have been kind to offer a. A tour at Dayton, at Wright State, and local partners nearby. To see what is, exists out there that maybe we haven't tapped into to provide more services in the area to our students. We had a call with Equitas Health last week, which our queer center coordinator, Jamison, helped me get off the ground to hear what. We might be able to do with potential mobile labs to campus. But we're not going to jump in until we talk to more students and create some business plans. But that is definitely on my mind as I come in. And I know Bob and I are going to work closely together on that project. I'd welcome feedback or thoughts on it.
That's great, Bill. I have Joan, and then Truth's going to say something, and then I'll close this out. Martha, you want your hand up? So I'll put Martha, and then we'll go to Truth, and then we'll close out. I'm closing in at Martha. Joan, what do you got for us?
Okay, somehow I wasn't allowed to unmute myself, but now I'm here. Couple of years ago, and I think, and I think it was twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. Between maybe reunion and work project or, or no, it was between graduation and work project. There was an organization that brought hundreds and hundreds of high school students. From all over the country, I believe, to campus, and they stayed in the dorms. They brought all their, their own sleeping bags and stuff like that. And it was from an organization that is. Developing the. Leaders of the future, something like that. We were supposed to get good connections with them. And, and that might have been a possible way to recruit students. Do we know anything about that? I know there are people here on the Zoom that know the name of that organization, people, faculty. Maybe Fred Kraus does, I don't know, Eric Miller, somebody does. Anybody here know anything about that and whether there are connections that are able to be made?
You know, I don't see Shane, who would probably be the best person to answer that. Shane, there you are. Shane, you want to give a quick response to that?
I believe the organization you're talking about is called Hobie. We haven't been able to host them the last couple of years. But since we did start hosting them. We did begin to see an influx of applications. From the groups that did come to visit. So it's still worth pursuing a relationship with them. I believe the students had a great experience when they were on, on campus doing their program. And that shows by. You know, years later, because I believe they're maybe sophomores when they come. So years later, we received their applications. We do leave a great impression with them when they, when they come to campus.
Thanks for that.
I don't know about the future of our relationship with Hobie. I'm not sure who's organizing that, but I imagine that it was just temporarily on hold. Through COVID. Thanks.
So next up, I have Martha, and then I'm going to go to Truth, and then I'll close this out. Martha, what do you have?
Hi there. I'm Martha Rose, class of seventy five. I was, I was on the alumni board way back. But I was curious what's up with the faculty, because we've talked a lot about the social and the cultural. Environment for students and a little, not much about the faculty. And I was just curious how many faculty there are, how many adjuncts, to what extent our faculty. I mean, it's a small student body we have, so what, what are they doing with their time? Are they helping in other areas of the college or, or in academic pursuits? You know, I don't, I don't, I never, there was one thing I saw, some faculty were doing some good stuff, but I was just curious about what's going on with that.
Yeah, I can quick answer this super quickly and keep in mind, I'm just a board member, so I don't know the full scope of the brilliance of the faculty. And if any faculty are here that want to chime in. It is my understanding, right now, we have eighteen faculty. We're also in the midst of needing to do a search for a vice president of academic affairs. A longtime faculty member, David Camler, is currently our vice president of academic affairs on a one-year term. And he does not want to pursue that any longer, which was his agreement when he stepped into that role. And right now, they're sort of working on a plan to think about a long term as, you know, Dean, Dean Creeping Bear continues to grow admissions. We then need to continue to grow the faculty. And obviously, a faculty that small is doing a ton of work, so they're very busy in the classrooms. They're coming out of sort of COVID and all of that joy that it brought with teaching online. And. Also, just leading a lot of service work in, on the campus. So I would argue that our faculty are brilliant and super busy and probably doing way too much. There were some great comments earlier from Kim, one of our dedicated faculty members, on the success of some students going into higher education. So we can be sure that we circle back on a little bit more detail about the faculty, but they're a great group. And Jane is working really closely with them. I know Coco has facilitated some sessions in the last year to sort of get them visioning. And their strategic planning conversation that I sent it in was very robust and just sort of where do we want to take our academics as we grow as a college, so.
Cool. Great. Good. And I would also love, you know, when I went to reunions, there were no faculty around. It would be great if, when there is a reunion, I'm not sure if I'm coming this year, but it'd be great to just meet some of the faculty, because I'm sure they're really interesting people.
Yeah.
And, you know, I have this chance for us, they're not people we know from when we were there, but, you know, they're always, you know, interesting people.
Thank you so much, Martha. I think my friend Truth has a comment, and then I'll close this out.
So, please, can you hear me? All right, so we are definitely thinking. Creative in the, in the Department of Admissions. Like, like just a few weeks ago, the school sent some students to Comic Con. And I was like, Shane, why can't I?
Hey, Truth, you're really delayed. You might want to turn your video off.
Dress like horse. Man or radical or something like that, you know. Saying, I'm always asking questions about where I can go. And some organizations I was involved in when I was younger are some of the places I plan on going to visit that are not traditionally college organizations. I was, I was lucky enough to speak at a hundred black men in Louisville, which was a nice organization. And there's a whole bunch of other spots that are like not traditional. Like I said, next year, I'm gonna try to go to Comic Con, dress this horse man or the Antioch radical. Peace. Advertising for Antioch.
Well, we've sort of come to our time, and I know we're over time, so I just super appreciate you all staying on for this extended program. It was just great to hear from everyone, great to see fellow Antiochians. When people ask me like what my political home is, I always say Antioch College, because anyone I meet from Antioch College, there's just, we're related somehow. Regardless of our time difference, age difference, you have it. So thank you all for coming. Thank you for contributing to the March Match. We will get through all the questions and circle back to folks. We're saving the chat so we can circle back to folks. Huge appreciation to the advancement team for putting this together. I know it would be much more exciting if we could be in person, but this is a close second to how awesome it is. And then we're going to close it out. So I hope you all have a great, I think it's Thursday evening. Enjoy the weekend. Spring is here. Antioch is here. We're all kicking ass, so appreciate you all so much.